The United States of America and the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, the end is all, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I got one direction.
Okay.
On the vote for the Ramsey County Bullies July 3rd, it said all members voted aye. It was one to second. And that was me.
I don't recall, but I'll take your word for it. Any other changes or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and second to approve as amended, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, minutes are approved. Bills. We got a list of bills and additional bills. Anybody have any questions on the bills?
I'll second. Sorry, let me, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve paying bills. Roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye. Bills are paid, financial reports. Couple different ones in your packets are sent out. You have the May liability report and the May expense report. Any thing that stands out to anybody? Any thing on there that you want to point out?
Nope.
Almost approved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financial reports as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Financial reports are approved, treasurer's checks.
Motion to approve.
Just that one. All right, a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's checks, roll call, please.
Gessner?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Treasurer's checks are approved, any additions to the agenda? Nothing?
Almost approved.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. NDSU, Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just wanted to do an update on some of the summer things that have been happening up in our office. Uh, we're very 4H heavy, a lot of 4H activities going on this summer. Uh, we've got over a hundred fifty members in 4H, so we want to keep them busy over the summer. Uh, today, we're having a clover bud camp, which is for beginner 4Hers. Uh, so that's out at the, out at the fair building today from nine to eleven thirty. Got a couple of our older 4H chiefs that are heading back up. Uh, so we're excited to, uh, use them as our kind of ambassadors, call them. We started our 4H farm visits yesterday. Uh, we've got two more visits to go, this is for all of those 4Hers that are showing livestock and horses uh, for our achievement days, and we're doing that to the wood record books. We have an ATV safety class tomorrow, we've got actually one in the morning, one in the afternoon held at the Peterson Fairgrounds. And we've got the game of fish coming up to, uh, to assist us with that. We had a sewing camp last week, and we've got another sewing camp this Thursday, Philip essentially will be leading that for us. And also on Thursday, we've got a new camp called Diggin' in the Dirt, Lindsay's gonna, uh, she's gonna teach the kids a little bit about our land judging contest, and hopefully get some kids excited about that. We'll be doing a babysitting class next week, as well as a home alone, are you ready, we've got full classes for those. Um, and just to give you a couple day, a few dates, uh, horse show will be June twenty-fourth, and that will be out at the Ramsey County Fairgrounds. Also, along with that, uh, the fair board has, is planning a state cry, uh, after the horse show. So if you were, if you'd like a ticket for that, fair board members have them, or else shooting sports participants in our 4H, uh, have them as well. But we also have some extras up in our office, so that's a good fundraiser. Um, they're really making progress on that addition, that building out there, so really excited to hopefully get our 4Hers out there.
Do you have to pre-buy?
You don't have to pre-buy, but it's good to have a ticket, we had a really good turnout last, last time. So.
Grab people, is the ATV class starting?
Tomorrow, um, first ones are at nine o'clock.
Are they full?
They are full.
Okay.
Yeah, they're full, actually, we don't, well, no, no, they're full, because we had to, Game of Fish actually brings helmet for each of the kids, so they had to send their, uh, sizes for that already. But be looking for that next year, uh, we, we do that every year, so it's a good one for the kids. Um, also, let's see, the, the horse show I said was June twenty-fourth, livestock expo will be June twenty-nine, and that will be all, all of our other animals. Um, static exhibits will be July eleventh and July twelfth at the memorial building here in town. Also wanted to let you know that we did have some kids participate in the district communication birds contest, um, last week at May thirty-first in Langdon. And we had seven Ramsey County 4Hers participate, with a total of five particip, or presentations. Um, our kids did very, very well. Uh, Ramsey County was the only county to bring a clover bud, which is a beginner 4H, it was kind of scary contest, uh, for these young 4Hers, so we're, we were really excited to have a clover bud, and she did amazing, she did a presentation on the wood, so.
Sarah, I'm sorry, where was the dates on the, the, um, is it, Static Exhibits?
Oh, Statics, July eleventh and July twelfth, so, and then that, on the eleventh, uh, we're also doing a parade of champions too, so we'll be giving, giving more information on that, that'll be, hoping to get some community out there, out to see what our kids have been up to.
This is all on the site, aye.
We, yes, we'll, we'll be giving, uh, more detail, like posters and.
Yep.
Yep, we'll be, we'll be promoting through social media as well. Um, so anyway, we, we will have four presentations, um, hopefully at the North Dakota State Fair. We have four presentations move on from our district competition, so, I'm a big deal for, for some of these kids. Um, Lindsay's been involved in, uh, we've got a new farm safety coordinator with, uh, NDSU extension, and they've been really promoting farm safety throughout the state. Uh, she just finished up an eastern farm safety camp last week in Fargo, with sixteen youth, uh, learning how to drive trucks, ATV's, skid steaks. And, uh, there is a potential, they're talking to have a camp here in Douglas Lake next year, so we're really excited that they've chosen us as the spot, and, uh, get more kids, uh, to bring the farm safety to our area. Um, and Lindsay just wanted to give us a little update on planting crops, she's been out and about the county most, have finished seeding, or really close, crop stands are good where there's moisture, however moisture is needed. So, just kind of, what's been going on in NDSU extension, anybody have any questions for us, or?
Busy, busy.
Comments? We are.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Sarah?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Is Rhonda here?
No. I'm here to take your questions.
Are we saying you're gonna take that?
Yep.
Okay.
I am Alicia here, um, from the Land Service Zone, I'm the administrative staff officer, Rhonda's been here, so she asked me to step in. We are asking for a motion to approve the social service zone compensation calendar be switched to July first of every year. Right now, our salary, um, compensation is January first, and we're asking for it to be switched to July first to be in line with the state, which our salaries are directly funded by the state fund, so.
Makes perfect sense.
Excellent.
We have a motion, do we have a second to go ahead and approve the, Rhonda? Okay. Further discussion? So that changed over July one, so.
Thank you.
Um, you got a vote? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign? And motion carries, now you're officially. Thank you so much.
I have to add that, that'll be like, for our office, it'll be so nice, because those changes used to happen in January, when we're doing all of our wage changes, our benefiting enrollments changes, I mean, it was just a lot, so it'll be nice to have, have those fifty-five employees separated now.
Kevin, uh.
Yes.
Want to, uh, jump into your stuff?
Sure. All right. We're getting ready to take our bridges out and install culverts again this summer, so we're renting an excavator from, and I got quotes from Ironhide, RDO, and Butler. Ironhide was cheapest, so. Want me to read the numbers?
Forty, forty-nine seventy, ninety-one eighty-five fifty-four, uh, nine thousand. Were the three different bids.
Right.
Forty-nine seventy a month was the, Ironhide.
So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and rent that excavator from Ironhide.
Make the motion, rent it from Ironhide. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve, uh, renting an excavator from Ironhide. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries.
Uh, culverts for Ramsey County ten, they came, and of course, they're actually installed now. And we've got some culverts for overland township. So we need to pay the bill to True North Steel for nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eight cents. Get a motion for that.
Make the motion to pay that bill. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay the bill to True North for the culverts. Are any of those, uh, FEMA replacements, or?
Uh, the one on Ramsey County ten is that, uh, federal job. But we'll end up taking those out and reuse them somewhere else.
Sure.
They're gonna be the wrong size, but at least that's water scoop now.
Is that where they're put in the box, or not?
Nope. That's, um, four.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
What, what's gonna be the permanent replacement on ten?
I can guess, but I don't know for sure, they're probably gonna be three sixty inches, I mean, that's not a quote for sure, but.
Well, it loses a lot of water through there.
Yeah. We need to do the hydraulic study there and everything, that's part of the federal money that we're getting, not paid for that study, so the study hasn't been done yet.
Basically, we'll pay for these culverts, and then you'll take them and reuse them somewhere else, but then the culvert, they're gonna go in there, hopefully have to pay like that.
Yep, we'll get to say twenty percent of that full.
Further discussion on the, uh, nineteen thousand, two fifty-nine oh eight for True North for culverts? If not, roll call, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Wilhelmie?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye. Motion carries.
Kevin, we did find a new steep, like brand new, still in the box for fifteen hundred dollars, that's probably worth about sixty-five hundred. This guy, I don't know if he won it on a deal, or bought it on an auction, or how he got it, but it's still in the box and everything, and it's just exactly like our old one, only it's an upright instead of. So, just to let you know, we did find this new steep in for the off, for the shop for fifteen hundred dollars. Any questions about that?
Need a motion, go ahead and buy that, or is it?
It's under the limit, so not really.
You bought it, you bought it.
Yep, we did buy it.
Okay, that's goodbye.
Uh, the past few years, we've been helping pay for dust control on county roads, we've been paying seventy-five percent of the cost, and local residents have been, been paying twenty-five percent of the cost. So my question is, do we want to keep doing that deal, or keep continuing that?
Do you know what we spent last year?
I think I budgeted about seven thousand dollars a year. And that's, you know, us paying seventy-five percent.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, get out, I don't know if you know what roads they are.
Well, I know.
Yeah, one in Penn, um, uh, there's one, Elsog has one front of his house, there's one, I, uh, I'm getting stumped with names here, but there's two on Ramsey County nine, way up north, and then there's one on seven, that's Ismus. And that's it. Final, I think. We've been asked a lot by townships to help too, but we, we don't do that. I mean, township boards can do whatever they want to do with their roads, we don't.
We don't.
Wishes of the commission?
We've been doing this like five, six years ago, probably to approve that key.
Keep the same percentages?
Same percentages.
Okay.
Seven.
That's actually in my budget.
Sorry. Uh. Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the, uh, cost share on the dust control. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries.
Well, these are just copies, copies of those projects, and we got to come in this year, kind of make one every year, just for you guys to do, you know.
Four of them.
And I just slowly figured out what soft spots were fixed and over by town seven and four, that's why I couldn't go on to get this done, but. The numbers one through seven are culverts that were replacing the bridges that were taken out. Other red spots are grab one, green is cracks, young. And chip ceiling, green is jack, chip ceiling.
What's the question on that last one?
That one was underwater, and it's still pretty much underwater, so we are holding off on it.
Yep.
I didn't take bids on it.
No, he's, he's asking, I didn't go. So these, we get this contractor, and that's actually gonna be done?
Yep, that is scheduled for, the box is scheduled for August.
Good deal. So that should be done by next year, you know?
It'll be done this year.
That's what I'm saying, so that next spring, we don't worry about that.
Right, right.
That'll be a bonus.
It's a box culvert, so they go in fast. Doesn't take a lot of time, but it's all. Still a couple weeks, but, yeah.
Any way we can put this on their website? Steve? Probably?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Guess I don't want to. Or just scan it?
Yeah.
Scan it.
There you go. Okay. Any, uh, update on that bridge, uh, that over in Morrison, trying to get that? Or that, that, that little limit, restriction on it?
Yeah, I, I printed out all the paperwork I could find on it, I mean. I can't find anything structured there, all of it, do you have a book that's like, which one? That Hady Bridge, or why is that the best? The only thing I can find is, uh, when you come onto the bridge, you're going through a curve, and they don't like that, you know, how, so they cut the, uh, they, uh, read, I can't even think of the term, but that, you get scored lower because it's not a straight approach onto the bridge, which is really difficult to even fix this. Way the road goes and the coaly goes, they don't line up, you know?
I think there's some section loss in the piers too, there's some cracks and stuff into the existing wood.
So it wouldn't be an easy fix.
And did that get denied for federal?
No, not federal, state, well, state.
State aid. Yeah.
And that'll be another, for around, every year today, you let it apply for, but we've got turned down on this year's.
Okay.
So since that turned down, it'll just be a home with, uh?
Yeah, twenty-eight hundred, clear twenty-eight tons. Which, I'm sure, like everything else, they'll go, figure, oh, it's, but that always happens, yeah. We've got a sign that way. So that takes the liability off for us. Theory.
So, yeah, it's marked anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Questions on the, now? The only thing I have left then is our results for our bid for our tractor and snowmobiler. I think I said you guys, uh?
Yep.
So the fir, we had one bid that did not have a bid bond attached, so first order of business is we need to have a motion to either reject that bid or open it. My suggestion would be to reject it, it's not fair for the other bidders not to have a five percent bid bond.
And that was one of the bid requirements, so.
Yes, it was very.
We need a motion to reject that, man?
Yes.
Yep.
So.
Motion, motion and a second to, uh, not accept the, 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 not include the bid bond. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All same sign? And that, uh, bid is rejected.
So just for the record, that was never opened.
Yep.
And we'll send it back, unopened. So the low bid, and now, as it stands, is Fallow machinery with a Fed tractor, a twenty-twenty-two Fed tractor for two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The only edge's bid was a new tractor. And general equipment was also a new tractor. Warranty was the same, say three years, three thousand dollars for, for all of them. And they all did bid the blower I was looking for, which is nice to see.
Is there any marking on the blower then?
One year, factory.
Right, just to be sure that.
Yep.
Berry goes out the first week you have it, yeah.
And did they all meet your, um, specification that you put out, Kevin?
Yes, it is, all three of these bids.
Okay. Did you have a preference?
I have a question.
No.
This Fed tractor, is that something you guys carry?
Yes, we do, we carry. Of, half of them, so I don't know if their customers are for sale, but.
Yeah, driving by this morning, looked like there was about six of them sitting out there.
That's a, that's a usable, all right, yeah.
It's a twenty.
Yeah, the one they've been, twenty-five, twenty-five, smaller than. Yep. So they do, you know, I mean, if your question is all their parts and services, I think that's, they've got a few around the countryside.
Speed wise, they all meet the speed requirements?
Yep. All the ETO speeds and hydraulic pressures and.
Horsepower and.
Horsepower, weight. I did not spec weight, but.
Okay. They don't be able to.
We spec, we spec weights on the back.
Yeah.
Cause, um, we figured, have us some work, right, without weight to be going like this.
Yeah.
So I don't care, they didn't ask for it, but we put it on there anyway.
Sure.
Another thing I didn't mention that, there is, um, we spec a twenty-three, but it might be a twenty-four, but we wanted to make sure we're, you know, it might even be a twenty-four.
Yeah.
Just so, you know, that's something to look out to. Kevin, question for you, all these, that were bid, if we were to go through with this, they're gonna be here for the snow season? Not that we're a year out, we go past the snow season, and they were the same predicament?
Yes, uh, of course, one of the Butler one, the tractor, it's already sitting here, it's just an air, get the blower. Uh, January first for John Deere, and December for the general equipment, so cross your fingers, but you have this.
It's been running pretty good for the years, hard getting stuff in, quite a day.
Yep.
I just asked that question, cause I don't want it to be in the mix of here we sit.
Right, it, it might even be a situation where the blower thick fliers get into the.
Right.
And this is, reasonably after, faster tractor was to not deadhead it or trailer it to.
Right.
Reaches.
Exactly.
Um. Would they be able to also put a blade on it, and when you're not using the blower?
Blade?
Yeah.
Like, uh.
Well, like using it as a truck, truck blower?
Well, that was.
Blower truck.
Um, that was a question I was gonna ask, did these, come with a loader on them, or not, or does the tractor with the?
I didn't spec the loader, we've got three day loaders, but.
Okay. I just asked him a question.
Yeah, I don't like it, um, we could easily learn overs, actually, our bench loaders, with it.
Oh, sure.
It would work for that, um, we do have another little blower, but wouldn't make sense to use that with the big blower.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, I mean, it, it, it couldn't be used for other applications, too, that's the biggest reason I didn't go with, uh, something with a motor on it that's certain your bucket here. I figured we could use this tractor for other things, rather than have multi-use type idea.
One thing to find out also, ours, uh, I think two or three horse, two hundred horse, get that pure. Is that enough power for that snowboard?
Yeah, that's what the vendor tractor recommended, well, they give you a range, we're right in the middle of the range.
He says that. I guess when I'm looking at the bids, I guess I, to be fair to the other entities that bid, I know that a Fed is cheaper, looking at that, but it also is a tractor that is used, you know what I'm saying? I guess that might be where some of this price difference is.
Right.
With that, if, for twenty-twenty-two, that's the three-year warranty on that, or is we really currently here?
No, still have the three-year warranty.
Do we make a decision quickly, or do we want to wait till after the, uh, the hearing? For the Ramsey County tax equalization?
Oh, we do wait, uh, yeah, the one thing is getting harder, so, you know, it takes.
No, as far as.
Right.
Do we order it, do it in like the next thirty seconds, or should we wait?
We can wait till after the. Cause it's.
Cause this is, this hearing is scheduled for eight-thirty, and we should, uh, stay on schedule with that, of the public hearing.
So when, when do you begin this?
Well, today, yeah.
Okay, what time?
Well, how long is this equalization gonna take?
Hopefully not terribly.
No.
That's like, three or four, five minutes, bro.
Usually not, yes.
Yeah, no, ten minutes maybe?
Oh.
Doc them, something like that, ten, fifteen minutes? If you're, if they want to stick around.
Yeah, we might just do a couple, answer a few calls here, and, uh, stick around for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, uh, we will need a motion to adjourn the, uh, as Board of County Commissioners and convene as Board of Tax Equalization. So with that, uh, we will need a motion to adjourn the, uh, as Board of County Commissioners and convene as Board of Tax Equalization.
So.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Board of Tax Equalization. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We will call the meeting of the Ramsey County Equalization meeting.
Good morning, I do need to add to the agenda that you have in front of you, the Holiday Gas Station Appeal, I believe you were given that information yesterday. Um, what I'd like to make a change also, if it's okay, um, we brought Johnson from the City of Dallas Lake here also, to move, uh, the city assessment information to the end, uh, due to the person from Holiday Gas Station, that's why Christie came in here, called him, she couldn't get on line or something, so we'll kind of wait for her to get back and. Connecting, connecting, so from there we can move into number two. Um, if you look, that is a motion to approve the values of townships contracted for county assessment, we still have two assessors working in county. Darryl Jams at Mike Beamer, uh, they do about five different cities and townships, their, um, changes are included in pages two through four, uh, which are also my changes that would have been over ten percent or three thousand dollars. Usually those are things like new construction, um, and maybe they become taxable or changes of classification and that kind of thing. So that would be the, the first thing on the agenda for the day.
So do we have a motion to approve the values of townships contracted to the county for assessments? That's on the, on the agenda?
Yes, yep.
Any questions on the the assessed values or the approved values? Anything you wanted to point out after?
Uh, no, they're doing the same as it done last year's.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve values of townships contracted to county for assessments. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we'd have item B would be a motion to approve values of townships that provide their own assessors, and that's still on page two through four?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the values of townships that provide their own assessors. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Motion to approve the inundated land classification per test list of applications.
That is on page five, uh, there are, there were fewer that applied this year than in the past year. And it's really actually a state, um, a state, uh, application, um, so we've, but we've always just brought it to your attention that we are reducing those properties, those acres.
This is the same thing we've been doing in the last, last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the county inundated land applications for twenty twenty three, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we'd have the, uh, agricultural land changes, the values, and currently we're sitting at eighty seven percent, is that correct?
Right around there, yes.
So. And we'd be within a ten percent deal, don't we?
Right.
So a four to seven percent increase.
That would hit us between ninety to ninety-five percent this time.
Yeah. And this is a state mandated deal, if we don't do it, the state will come in and do it for us. And so you can see on page seven what the valuations of all agricultural land. Oh, yeah. And percentage change per year, uh, last year we did a one percent increase. Twenty twenty one, we did a four percent. Twenty, we get a zero percent. Nineteen, we did a three, eighteen a two. So one of the things, you know, my recommendation would be to pull up, certainly something, because if we don't, state comes in and good, does it for us, or we take a year off, or we do a lower amount, and then we come back and we get hit by large increases, and so in the early two thousands, we significant flooding going on, didn't do a lot of changes, increases, and in twenty ten, we get a nine point eight, eleven, we did a six, twelve, we did a twenty six. Uh, thirteen, we did a fourteen percent increase, fourteen did a twelve point four. So, and we don't want to hit people with those kind of increases.
Beth, this number you have circled is six seventy one, sixty two, that's where we're at now, or?
It's our average for twenty.
Oh, that's the average.
And one thing too, I think the.
The seven fifty nine, sixty three, that's where we want to be?
That's where the state, that would be at a hundred percent tolerance with the state, we need to be within ten percent to be in compliance with that number. Um, when I spoke with Ron at NDSU, who kind of does the most regarding K-line values I mentioned to you guys earlier, he did think that we would probably be seeing an increase again next year, so just.
So the state just does this increase automatic, or are we getting this?
If we weren't in compliance, then they would make an adjustment for the entire county.
So when we were twenty percent or whatever we did in twenty or whatever, did they come up with?
No, we must have, I would assume we did that, the commission did that at that time, there were some different things over the years, like one year they had held the capitalize, capitalization rates for a certain amount of years, and when that came out, that raised everybody's values across the state, and that was a really tough year. So there's been some different things that caused some of those to be, be higher, but.
Did you have a recommendation for between four and seven?
I gave it four to seven, but, you know, obviously I like staying closer to ninety-five percent because anything occurs either direction with any changes. But it seems like that's a very safe place to be, and we try to be there with commercial and residential.
And that seven would get us to ninety five?
Yes.
Thoughts of the commission?
Do you have any input in this, or is this just coming from the state?
I really don't have any input, um, mostly we just administer the program.
This is just land value right now, right?
Agricultural land value, yes.
I know you're willing to turn. I, to me, it just seems like it never stops, I don't know, I get it, it's not usual. I don't, I don't know, the state is coming up with all these numbers and just constantly comes, and I get it.
You know what they base their numbers on, is it production and?
Yeah.
Sales and?
The capitalization rate with three, so that's productivity.
It's based on soil type, you know, so it better.
Yes, yeah, after that's what we do.
So the soil types here that match the ones in the valley.
Yeah.
Are supposed to be at some kind of that pot, whatever you want to call it, which is kind of a BS deal too. Well, yeah, depending on how much the farmer puts in and can create the soil better, I mean. Yeah. Seventy seven, ninety five?
Yes.
My frustration thing is, is if you do this, let's say you do the seven, and the next year they come and say, oh, we gotta go up another four percent to stay in the ninety percentile, that's my frustration on it. And I think that's what we're gonna see with the community, is the frustration is, is not that they gotta pay more taxes, it just seems like the state keeps saying every year it's more and more and more. You know?
Yeah.
If it was where you did the seven, and there was a five-year period or a three-year period where it was stable, I think people would be okay with it, but it doesn't seem like it's stable. It just doesn't.
The, one of the, there's a lot of, um, things that go into what creates this number, but one of the largest changes for this year was it's a ten-year running average that they use, but they throw out the high and the low, and just use eight, we typically were able to throw out our high, but this now, right now, this year, we have two highs here, so that's what's causing it.
So then if you had three lowers, it goes in opposite direction, never seen that.
Yeah.
That's a problem, you know?
Want to do a middle of the road, you want to do the minimum four percent, you want a commission?
I'll take the most, I'll go six percent.
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion to, do, do the life a second. Other motions?
I would make one, that we do the four percent.
Four percent? Do we have a second on that? Do we have a second on the four percent? One more time, second on four percent? More, motion to, do the life a second?
I'll move, we go five percent.
We have a motion on five percent. We have a second on five percent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for five percent increase. Further discussions? If not, uh, Mr. Rokel.
Otis?
Nay.
Polk?
Nay.
Gessner?
Aye.
Willhoney?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries. Five percent it is.
All right, so I think that with that, we can, um, you know, move into the city, yes, move into the city, Rob can, um, maybe give you a little bit.
So, uh, real quick, uh, the, we had a data loss, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, uh, in the middle of February, in our campus software, we were able to re, start recreating some of that at the beginning of March, um, so we kind of got put into a pickle in trying to get everything done within the time line for our board of equalization. Uh, with the information that we were able to gather and get put together, we thought that we needed to do, uh, an increase to our residential properties, because we're at eighty seven point oh two percent. Uh, and I've just indicated we have to be between that ninety and a hundred percent for compliance with the, with the state, uh, so we applied a six percent increase to the dwelling values, uh, which resulted in approximately a four point eight percent increase to bring our, uh, our ratio to ninety, just over ninety-two percent. Uh, we're comfortable with that, uh, just knowing and hoping that, expecting sales to level out a little bit on the residential side. Uh, and then our commercial values were already at ninety-two percent, so we didn't make any adjustments to that. Uh, and I believe you should have a copy of my report, I'm open to any questions if you have any questions.
So the state mandates the commercial stuff too, just like the A.
Yeah, that was the same, I mean, you have to be between ninety to a hundred percent on that real. And the eighty-seven percent that we saw was pretty standard across municipalities throughout the state, that's where pretty much everyone was sitting at.
And, um, Steve, is the Sally Paul on? She?
No, she just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of and had reviewed it.
Okay, um, so I received a call yesterday from a Sally Paul of Delta Property Tax Advice out of Texas.
Good to meet you, Melissa.
Um, I think we should do the appeal first in case there was a change. Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, um, and, um, Rob had let me know about it a while back, they had discussed it at their city meeting, I can't tell you what.
So, and you should have a copy of my appeal report as well, but we did receive an appeal for the property value of the Holiday Gas Station property. I went through and, and, uh, did a, an assessment of the site, and after my assessment, I saw that there was a minimal increase that should have actually been, uh, implemented, like five hundred dollars or something, so we left the, the value as is, and the city board denied the appeal.
We did offer her, um, a team's caller, however, it's down to be here today, and they did not attend the city meeting.
No, they didn't attend the city meeting, and so the, the way that the appeal process works is they have to start with the city, and we did get a written notice of their appeal, uh, then they have to come to the county, and then if that's denied here, then they have the option to go to the state for an equalization. But they have to follow those steps, if they don't follow those steps, then they will be seen by the state board.
So basically, it's five hundred dollars difference, which was.
Well, they're, they're asking, I believe it was, I don't know, you got it here, so we have valued out at four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred for the entire property, and they were asking to have it reduced to two hundred and forty-six thousand, five ninety-one. And they were using a cost estimate from Marshall and Swift, there was actually no assessment or anything done, and even the cost estimate that they initially sent us, I had it sent back because they didn't have the, the proper multipliers and stuff on it, and they, they didn't actually have anyone to multiply the property, they, they filed appeals for all their, all their stations across the city.
And they didn't show up at the city meeting either?
They, they didn't show up at the city meeting.
They had the option to.
No, we don't, the, the city doesn't provide a virtual option or anything.
And she had one here, she just wanted to make sure we were looking at it, and that's all she wanted. Move to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the appeal from the Holiday Gas Station. Further discussion? Rokel, please.
Otis?
Aye.
Polk?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Willhoney?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Feel is denied. Okay, motion to accept the city, is that, would that be appropriate here?
Yes.
Yep. We have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the city equalization values. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And that should be it. Motion to, uh, close out the hearing um, as a board of equalization and reconvene as county commissioners.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and adjourn as board of tax equalization and reconvene as board of county commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are now reconvene as county commissioners. So thank you, thanks, Rob.
Thanks, thank you.
We'll go back into Kevin's agenda and the tractor board.
Maybe just for a little bit further information, uh, the reason that, uh, High Plains didn't put their five percent bid limit, they were bidding a used tractor. It was sitting on somebody else's lot, you know, unsure if they were gonna be able to get the tractor. So they didn't want to put it at five percent bid limit and not be able to get the tractor. That's just information. It's not relevant to anything here. I guess I understand what you're going.
Have you looked at this?
I have, yep. Actually, all these tractors are nice, nice tractors.
Well, the other reason I'm asking since it's you, I just wondered if you've been there and heard that and made sure.
Well, not this particular one. Uh, it was probably a state rental. They rented them to the state for less than two hundred fifty hours. There's probably dozens of them out there, so I'm guessing it came from one of our state districts groups. It may be still sitting in that district somewhere.
And the Fent is the, you know, it's got the higher speed, right? That's your, is the deer?
The deer does, yep.
It does, okay.
That's not a standard transmission in that deer, but it is available.
Okay.
What's the top speed on that run?
Um, thirty-one, I think it is.
Not as fast as that.
The city, the city actually has a seven R two thirty they get every year from us, okay? That's a seven, that's two hundred and thirty horse, but it's a seven R. It's a step up a lot more money.
Sure.
And it takes quite a bit of horsepower to pull that. You guys have seen, I've seen that snowblower work and it takes, because, but Kevin knows this too, that you got two hundred and thirty horsepower like we're trying to sell here, but the actual PTO goes down a lot. And you know, the engine's two thirty, but the PTO is.
PTO horsepower is
Yeah, so that's why we went more, it takes some horsepower to pull the snowblower. And Kevin does his research and all too, but that's why we want bigger too. Power.
Is this, are you going to do anything?
Of course, I have to figure it into next year because the top was to hear the order.
Is this gonna be a problem in your budget?
Uh, what would you guys approve of?
I'm talking with the budget that you did last year.
No, because we, I budgeted almost four hundred thousand for a new order this year last year.
And we did that.
Yeah.
The budget.
But.
We're not, I mean, what I'm saying is we're not gonna come in and then all of a sudden we're looking for a whole bunch of money for your budget this year.
No. That shouldn't be an issue. It shouldn't raise the bill levies at all.
What's the odds of your tractor, Ron, being a twenty-four?
Um, fifty-fifty. It's really close to cut off. It's somewhere in the
Still we got a question. If it was a twenty-four, does it go through? A twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six for one of you?
No, that doesn't make a difference.
It's a date. Oh, oh, date of production.
Okay, we receive purchase.
If I were one today, it ends up being a twenty-four, that's the benefit.
It's just the bonus.
We, it's a bonus because we all know that places go up on equivalent, but if I order today and it comes in twenty-four, that's about it.
Try yours.
I just don't want to put it in there.
Oh, and you can't do.
Then, then I can say it's gonna be a twenty-four, then it's a twenty-three. I don't want to do that. I can't do that.
I'll be honest with you. I'm stuck between to move and yet saving coming forty thousand dollars. This doesn't sound like a lot, but with all the other discussions that we got going on, it sounds like a lot, but that, that's where I'm.
I'm in the same predicament as Ron, but not one way or the others.
Yeah.
So that holds out.
Right.
It's a big tractor. They don't have something so.
But it's gonna, it's gonna take that much to do it. If you're gonna do the job, we're gonna have the.
Well, that's two hundred and thirty horse too.
Well, I, I, I see where the money is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree too. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thirty more horsepower. It's easy where the money is.
Another forty grand, but.
Right. Hundred percent see where you're going. I, I see where you guys are staying with the horsepower.
I mean, it's, it's all logical. I mean, you can justify it without without fabricating anything.
Is the residual value gonna be better with a green tractor? When it comes time to replace it?
I gotta say one thing second to none, our parts are perfect. Yeah, I don't care what it's green, blue, whatever. Shit breaks down.
Yeah.
If you guys will find that out, then.
At least you can realize about that. It's nothing in this stuff.
Exactly. But we do have pretty good price per.
So obviously, it's worked with the little bit, or all that's been through that. Cause all this discussion for not, I don't.
You have to, you have to put in your bids why you're not accepting a lower bid. You have to have reasons why and otherwise, brand X can come back.
When there'd be a couple of things, it's bigger tractor, it's a brand new tractor.
And so I was gonna ask, when you put this, when you put this process out there, was it for a new tractor or make up with a used tractor?
No, I expect a one-year-old tractor with less than two hundred and fifty hours. Because they all, anytime there you have a used tractor available and they chose not to do it, which is fine. I, I understand. I think High Plains was bidding a used tractor. I, I don't know, but part of that was availability.
Okay.
So what all the deer by the time it snows? I, I think overall, I think we're just wrapped around the forty thousand right now just because of the future of our budget. Nothing against the deer, nothing against the Fent or general equipment. It's just they just, I think we're coming, just we're gonna fear we gotta make a budget happen this year. That's my fear, you know? We need to go.
I would agree. We, we do need to reconsider what our budget is.
Yep.
Even though I would maybe have different thoughts on the basis. Forty thousand, forty thousand doesn't seem like much, but all of a sudden, you know, a lot.
Oh, is that Fent, uh, stacked up against the deer as far as comparisons, as far as horsepower, speed?
Well, yeah, so I've been asked on the book there, the Fent, what does that come out to on PTO horsepower? Yeah. I know the John Deere, you know, you got two hundred and thirty, goes up a hundred and eighty-five PTO.
You're, you're looking at two, and you said it's a two hundred horse, the Fent?
Uh, yeah. Two hundred and fifty.
So what do you think Lee is gonna be?
Right, so, so it's not changing this year's budget?
Oh, you're gonna look it up.
No, we're not sure. So there's, there's more increase.
I guess, yeah, that's a question. Do you think your budget's gonna be? If we were to go with the John Deere, is your budget gonna be within the same as this year, you think?
Uh, no, next year is my big year with, uh, paving project and.
Right, because if your budget comes in and it's close to where we were last year, then it's probable that we could do it, you know?
It's gonna be higher than last year because of the paving project, but we do have, uh, Gopher Lane here. Wherever I go. I can never think of.
Hey, Prairie Dog's larger than it, Gopher. Dig bigger holes.
My thoughts is I'm waiting in terms of John Deere. I know it's more money, but I think the horsepower is gonna be a huge thing. I would agree with the horsepower. I, I wish Butler was here to give us the explanation of.
What's the difference in horsepower between, uh, the John Deere and the J C B?
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty horsepower?
That's more at the engine.
But then on the other side, but they did meet the standard, you know, so that's, that's hard to say that we're gonna go with the John Deere because of the horsepower when they met the standards, you know?
What's cool about the J C B is it's fast.
The J C B is also.
Forty-three miles an hour.
That's just somebody going to the windshield. I'm sorry.
At thirty miles an hour, it doesn't matter what speed you're going. You're not wearing your seatbelt, it's gonna be a mess.
Those European tractors, the Fent and the J C B are good to design that they hook up to their grain trailers and haul in the town with their tractors. I don't know how they do it.
Well, and then some of the, the highlight reels of the J C B, they're using, um, using a mass plow, plow trucks. You know, they'll put a, a blade on the front of it and, and a wing and use it as a plow truck because you can travel so fast with it.
So they're actually designed, the, the way the axles are placed to, to handle that speed better than.
About one eighty-five PTO worst.
But again, you're talking European tractors that harvest.
So everybody's saying usually they go through and they're not really. So it's hard to close. And what did you say, Ron?
At one eighty-five PTO, so it goes down forty-five horse from engine to PTO, right? So if it's two hundred horse, I bet you the same, same forty, forty-five horsepower last top engine.
Yeah, I figured it says, they're calling it engine net when it's one eighty-five, what they're, so I don't know what the net means.
Yeah.
Does the, the solar spec is going by the engine horsepower? When the solar specs are two eight hundred fifty, two fifty, whatever, they're going by engine horsepower. They realize that it's loose power and PTO.
Yeah. So your budget this next year is gonna remain strong because of road projects. However, we don't pick up this additional.
Is there a preference on eager part?
Just wherever's available. I mean, we don't want high gear and we may not have any snow last year or this year, but who's last year?
No. Or we could get twenty inches in October.
That's scary, yeah. That was the biggest reason I expected a one-year-old two hundred horsepower, two hundred and fifty hour.
But then again, you said, we don't know if the Schulte snowboards are coming to the town, you know?
They're right. They, they say they'll be here in six months.
Hate to hold the tractor hostage because the snowboard is not here.
Let's make a decision. Seven, you don't.
We go with Butler Machinery.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to go with the bid from Butler Machinery for the Fent for two hundred and eighty thousand four fifty. Any further discussion? Further discussion? If not, uh, Rokel, please.
Willhoney?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Polk?
Aye.
Gessner?
Aye.
Brett?
Yeah. Just to be interesting. Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Butler Machinery.
Thank you, Ron.
Alright, thanks guys for trying. Appreciate it.
Next one.
There you go. That's all I have. If you guys have something for me.
No? I do have one comment. I was talking to some people from, uh, Prosper last week and we talked about them, which are the Jimmy Glotches. And he said there, it has nothing to do with what's happening, which is really good. If on the record, they used to be at Bridge. I don't remember that at all.
We don't have any reference to Bridge, but that's that's
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot of runs in the bridge, because if we're gonna put a man, that's the issue.
No, there was no request or nothing. We were just talking.
Yeah, he showed me those, uh, minutes from our meeting that they were gonna go look at a bridge here.
Okay. Anything else, Kevin?
Well, I guess we're dealing with some stuff with the water board about a cover eight that we may have to open cut the blacktop road, but that's gonna be two, three, maybe four months. Put it to hydrology study.
I thought you were gonna say it's gonna be only two to three months.
No, it'll be that much slower.
Is it, uh, west of three or east of three?
It is east of four, I'm sure. David, Lawrence.
Okay.
Brian Lawrence. But, uh, further information on that is, well.
Sure. Okay. Moving on the agenda. Brian. Mr. Sam. Raid study.
Morning.
So we asked Brian to come in this morning and talk about that raid study that maybe just refresh everybody's memory. Uh, give some of the new commissioners, uh, an update on what was done. I think this was started a year ago or so.
Yeah, I'll give a quick history on, uh, how we got to the point they are now. So, um, so first of all, the survey was completed in October last year and, um, the county commission, um, were presented that by the agency called Gallagher um, on, uh, the county commission meeting on November third. Um, we had already had budgets set, so, um, that was tabled and here we are today talking about it again. Um, I did speak with five or six counties that need Gallagher and all but, uh, all but one of them were, were satisfied with, uh, with the outcome and results.
Already took one. But thank you.
Uh, actually, the cost for the survey was twenty-six thousand six hundred dollars. It was a little bit of an investment to do this, so. Um, data collection began about mid-April twenty twenty-two, ran through June. Um, there was nineteen counties and one city, the city of Lays, that received, um, a request for wages and those types of things from their, um, from their agencies and their organizations. Uh, we did get thirteen return, um, to Gallagher for the, for the survey. Um, we did find that the data was really slowly coming to start off the survey, and, um, it was a little frustrating for, for us, for me and for Gallagher, and we ended up starting reaching also personally, you know, they'd received the requests. What we found is actually a lot of the requests, um, the data was been turned in from the auditor's office. Uh, most counties smaller than ours don't have like an HR person. See the contract developer, you, you, you got it, your department, who's the HR folks. Um, well, they found that the audit, the audit, the auditors were spending time for the election, I mean, the pre-election prep and the post-election prep. So we reached our deadline for the end of June. So that's kind of why things kind of drug on, and, uh, we, we kind of lost out in the budget period, so. Um, obviously, the, the survey, um, looked at all those, um, agencies or organizations that sent in their, their wage scales. You know, if they had grade scales, wage scales, step scales, whatever they used. Um, they looked at the individual wages for positions. They tried to do their best to match the position per position, you know, HR, HR person, or however it would work. Um, and just kind of saw where we are with the market. The end result really was, we were actually pretty competitive with wages. Um, but they still had given us some, some proposals, and I think you guys received, um, it was probably yesterday, some revised, um, proposals that Governor put out to us, and, um, I think it should be the file or the document, the option A and B wage adjustment. If you look at the document on the bottom right-hand corner, it kind of shows the proposals. And what the cost would be per year. Keep in mind, when they're saying we have a wage increase, this is gonna be, you know, the salary's gonna cost us that much a year, but we gotta make sure we're adding our payroll tax, or we're adding increase to any curves, um, if we're gonna have a cost of living increase, you know, this is gonna affect that, you know? That percentage will go up more, so there's, you know, overall, more, more than just giving a higher wage cost, so. Um, the documents, um, you got option A that has, um, basically fourteen grades. And what I mean by grades, you guys probably know, or not know, but, um, they'll create a, uh, like a chart, and a position will go in, you know, two positions could be grade one, you got one position, grade two, there'd be, you know, three positions in grade four, and so on down the road, so. But that's something we haven't had, so they created these, these grades. And each one of these, um, proposals are based off of the grades, you know, throwing that position in grades, you have a more uniformity, um, um, salary scale, so. So option A, um, they use the thirteen grade, I'm sorry, the fourteen grade, and then option B is the thirteen grade. And if you were to look at option B, um, you know, the increases are a little bit more aggressive per the proposal because of the less grades. And then you got some, um, some, probably some worksheets and stuff prior to see yesterday too before this, um. That was, one of the worksheets includes pretty much what I have here, but I took out all the stuff in the middle because it had like our step scale on there, that was, you know, for this presentation really wasn't needed, but, um, so they updated our step scale also that we currently use for yearly increases. So if you guys have any questions, I, maybe I'm not.
I, I, I've got one, I don't know if I can explain it right, but several years ago, maybe Commissioner Brett may have been on that, when they developed that salary schedule, I don't know how long ago that was, from the steps, you know? How was that read compared to this comparatively? You know what I mean? When they developed that step schedule, was it based on information about the state of the world or something?
I, I guess, I don't know. I, I don't have any history of that, and I.
I would just say that's comparative. Very good.
And, and you have to, um, remember, um, we'll have to know that the, the comparisons that they, or the organizations they reached out to were, you know, similar in size to us, um, I mean, they didn't go to the western part of the state where you're having related wages, those types of things. Now, you've got, you know, Barnes Cavalier, City of Delos Lake, Edin County, Grand Forks County, McCammering, Nelson, Pierce, Ridge on the Skies, Stasi, and Toner and Trail. Those are the ones that responded, um, to the survey.
Yeah, I know we called the year when that was brought into play, but I think it was before the oil, I think it was. About a while ago.
Yeah.
Twenty plus.
For me?
Twenty plus, man.
Twenty plus years ago.
It's my guess, do I just use some other counties and then put the dollar house into the chart?
And what we're finding now is, it's, so we have, we have this twenty-five step scale. And in theory, step one is where you should bring, you could, maybe somebody that doesn't have a lot of experience and whatever, but we're starting to find is, I, I don't know, we've, since I've been here, we've hired somebody at step one. We've always, you know, we need to be more competitive in the market, and, you know, we may go to step two, three. The general rule is largely we wanna go to the step five on that scale to, you know, have somebody start.
Well, that's the point of the steps though.
Yeah.
If you bring someone in with five years' experience, that, that's the whole point of having a step. That's why you have that step. Uh, one, because if you bring someone in that doesn't have any experience, you don't wanna be bringing them in a step five either. You wanna have that leeway. And that's why they did, I mean, assuming that's why they did that, but as far as, you know, federal and the state, they, they all do it the same way. The state does eight through eight or something like that. So it's very similar.
I think what we're finding is, I mean, we may not be bringing something in at step one now that's got no experience, you know? Might be coming in at a step two or three.
We've been really fortunate, I think, when we have job openings here that we're getting people that are qualified. I think, since I've been on the commission, we've been watching.
Yeah, I agree. I, we don't have, the county does not have much strength over anybody, so. We're very fortunate there.
Well, what we're trying to do is figure out the direction to give our department heads on the upcoming twenty-four budget. And do we go with a percentage increase? Do we stick with some of the options that the company had indicated? Or do we come up with our own?
Candy, do you have what? Uh, what we given for increases of the last four years? Off the top of your head. I know last year was four percent, then I think it was three the prior year, eight or was it four and four? So last year was step plus four, year before it was step plus three. But that's only if you came up on your step. You didn't get the step plus the candle percent. You had to be coming up on your step, right? So basically, we're given, if you were, if we give a step and four percent, you're probably getting a eight percent raise?
Uh, it'd be seven. The largest would be seven. That'd be somebody that's, you know, within their first two to three years of employment. I guess I live under misunderstanding, and I thought if you were, it didn't take you away from getting your step. Let's say you got a four percent locality raise, and your step was due that year, it didn't take that away from you, you still got that step when your time came up.
We just, we do all the step increases at the beginning of the year, so you could have somebody that was hired in, in July, and they're already getting their first step increase, you know, in.
Right.
And then they would've got the four percent on top of that, but then they would've got a step cost on that? So they would, let's say they would've went to January, just use examples. So you hire them in July at a one, January they would've went to a two. And when we agreed to a step plus four percent, they would've went to a three plus a.
Oh, no.
No.
Okay, so I'm understanding that, right. They only get that step if, if it's due.
Yeah.
You don't, you didn't just jump a step.
No.
If you had the step coming, you got the step.
Right.
And like for candy, you're maxed out at step, so you didn't see the step. Ready, or you're not. But you're here for the year.
I think Kevin's, Kevin, are you maxed?
I'm stepped out. Now, if you stepped out, all you would receive would be your cost of living.
And I think that needs to be reviewed.
What's that?
That, that those people that are capped out on that step scale. You know, that you get more than a cost of living increase.
The problem is, uh, now, once you're stepped out, these people are still getting their steps, and pretty soon they're making more than you.
Yep.
That's the only issue there.
And as the years go on, you're gonna have more, you know, because we have such longevity employees that you're gonna see more, because I think there's.
Explain this to me.
Five.
If you're a step.
Or six.
You're as a supervisor, and there's twenty-five steps, and you're the employee underneath you, and there's twenty-five steps, and their salary max is thirty. Your max is forty, dollar amount, let's say. And if you get locality of four percent, yours goes up, and they get locality of four percent, it's only gonna go up off that thirty dollars. They're not gonna pass you. How can they pass you? Their ma, their step still matches them all no matter what.
It, it, it only happens on people that are on the same.
On the same.
Not the supervisors on the same grade.
On the same grade. I'm cracking that. So I'm like, there's no way the supervisor and the individual on your U is gonna pass you, right?
They, they mix up too.
Yes, because if, let's say everybody was maxed out. You're only gonna get a four percent. Let's say that's what it was, locality. There's not.
Oh, it's a grade where, grading them step.
What's that?
The grade.
That's right, so that's.
So what the grades are, is it, um, it just kind of cleans up, you know, right now, we've got thirty positions, and there's thirty different starting wages for each one. When you, you, like those positions and grades, you might have, um, I don't know, like the auditor and the sheriff in the same grade, probably grade thirteen. They have the same salary scale and the same step scale. Uh, you know? So you just, you just, you place that position in one of the thirteen or fourteen grades. It just kind of cleans up your, your salaries, so you don't have them, and because right now we have except thirty different starting salaries. And this is, these grades are pretty commonplace, especially government.
So these are, just for you, for that year, you see in grade thirteen then?
Um, uh, we don't, you currently use grades? I, I don't know if I'm.
You use steps very well.
Yeah, it's just, there's a wage, starting wage pick for, you know, superintendent, and, um, that's where the step scale goes through, um, by Kevin here, but.
It's more of a positional, like I have operator twos and operator threes.
Right.
And then of course.
Duty description.
Yep.
Goes off the position of duty description is how they got that step or that grade. So if you were to come in as.
No, you can't. It's a step or a grade. It's not one, I mean, a grade and a step are not the same thing.
No, no.
What they're trying to do, when, the way I understand this, is they're getting away from the steps and you go to the grade.
Well, we still have a step scale. So we got each grade that's, you know, got a, a starting end and an ending, and there's a step scale that's created for each one of those.
So the grade is basically positioned, so that's, they're saying that this position is based off a grade five. Would be, yeah, same as the federal side. So if you got five different positions, you might have the supervisor at ten, you're one at eight, you're two at seven, and so on, so then you would bring them in as that grade, and then there's steps for those grades. So that you don't have what's happening right now is if you brings a new employee and, and he goes to four percent, he's maxed out of steps, that's where you're saying the other one's catching on the past them because of the steps are not having that grade. Once you have the grade, that can't happen. It wouldn't happen because the grade is what your position is. I, I, I see what you're, I see what it is.
Well, anyway, I guess, um, we just need to make a decision if we're gonna move on with one.
Proposals that they gave us are step or the fit was in as well, maybe we don't do that, I guess.
Um, like I said, we do have, from what Gallagher said, and I just, I have a short time being around, two years, um, I think our wages are pretty competitive.
I can't remember where they said we are as far as percentile that they, they tell you. Because you have different, like a fifty percentile you could be, or a seventy-five percentile, it gives you different options.
Yeah, the fifty percentile is basically you're at market. That's market.
So that's where we're at.
Yeah. And then seventy-five percent is, you know, um, over market, so you're, we're gonna adjust our wage scales to be over market.
So basically, these options are just whether we're gonna stay at market or not, like, or.
Say what we have.
The simple, for the simplest-minded people in here that.
Right.
You stay and you do a locality, or you could go to this and you still do a locality, locality I'm talking like.
So basically, you went with this as a year, okay, at a hundred and some thousand.
Really? So what I have with this, some of these positions? It's a new raise.
Yeah, so, looking at, um, option B, that worksheet, you know, it's condensed down instead of fourteen grades, thirteen grades, so you have a more aggressive, um, increase. And then you're looking at the one, you know, the last column, and that's where you're looking at, you know? Those are, the wages are gonna be changed to be above market up there. That's why you've got a hundred and top of a hundred and twenty-four thousand over a year, you know, increase.
That's just the wage. That's not what we pay in. And then we pay a locality on top of it. You, you could be writing in two hundred and fifty thousand and work up.
That's what I'm, yeah, the cost of living is gonna begin to increase because there's higher wages.
Okay, hundred and twenty-four thousand, that includes a instead of the total benefit.
Yeah.
So it's just, uh, cost of living increases, that's like, it's even.
Right.
And what you pay in, like social period and all that, right?
Yeah, that's the payroll cost of living there. It's hard for me to suggest what to do because I've got skin in the game myself, you know?
The biggest thing is, why do you see such?
I've looked at this a million times. And the biggest reason that you're seeing some of the jobs go higher than others is the way they graded them. I've sat through this with a federal side. It's never an easy decision. And it goes, it's just not an easy decision. It costs more. You know, depending on how much higher you wanna be than the market. That's the question that's been with us, you know?
It's not saying, it's not saying that we're not within the market, it's where do we want it now.
But then you also have to consider that how many offices only have two people. And you keep, like, job descriptions keep changing, things keep getting added.
Oh, right.
You know?
That's what they're, that's.
And you're not hiring.
That's what they need to do.
To take on.
You're not hiring anybody else to to take on more duties. I I, I'm tracking that, Candy, a hundred percent. And in today's world, do you, do you have a position or do you have more duties? It seems like you're feeling more, in today's world, do we have more, do we have more duties?
In some regards, and you know, our, our work has gotten more efficient with technology and stuff, so.
I mean, as long as I've been on the commission, I've always thought, we've given very generous raises. And I'm looking at the three different jobs that I've had in my career, the major job. To get a four, to get a four percent raise back the back years, I got a hundred dollars. I came from a. But that doesn't just happen, I'm not marrying or seeing that from you Candy. It helps cause I do it a lot, but.
I think that he does.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough decision because do we stay with the percentages or do we go with this? Do I believe people need raises? Yep, absolutely, a hundred percent agree, but how do we go a locality?
So do we wanna give one direction, do we wanna give departments a couple options to come in at with their budgets for twenty four?
I, could we do this, Jeff, could we have a proposed? Two ways, cause if, they're gonna have their budget, the only difference is gonna be a, would be the wages, right?
Preliminary budget, you start at the higher end.
Yeah.
Correct.
You go, you go in high because.
And then you.
You can't, you you were, you can't go beyond that point. You can, you can, you can decrease.
You'd even know that, right?
Yep.
Correct, a hundred percent.
Yep. So that's why we've always had them put in the highest. And then from there, you make the decision of where you wanna be. It's, it's not guaranteed, like this is what I'm gonna get next year until October, when the final budget is.
Absolutely, so if we told them to go with option A at seventy five percent. As the highest, we can still bring that back down to what we're doing currently. Is that, is that correct?
But I think what you're asking, you could change it just to a coal instead of a straight.
Right. That logical, you know?
Cause then like, what Candy's saying, you'd be on.
Right, so if you take the seventy five percent in option A, that's your high end. Then we can adjust that factors.
And I think when Megan proposes, she did say that, we're up to fifty percent, the seventy five, five percent. By the way, you gotta go to the seventy five percent, you could go in the middle of the relegated.
Well, do we wanna go through and make the adjustments on the individual positions that are kittywampus? And. Then give them a direction, or do we wanna go with option B or option A to?
So the ones that you can get are considered, they're not even at the fifty percent level?
Well, yeah.
They're not, right, cause we got some that are over.
Yeah.
And you got some that are up here.
Right.
And that's the way I was looking at it, what you're, can leak, I think we definitely need to get the people that are under this fifty percentile to fifty percent so that they're in the market value. And then from there on, I think that's a different decision to see where we're gonna go from there. But that's, I'm listening to people that I think you're saying. It's hard to stomach when you have someone underneath the fifty percentile or the going wage. And then you see some that are over. I don't know what the fair deal is.
Well, I think you gotta get the cloud.
Does this need to be made today? Should we do it in the next meeting?
Well, we should give departments a direction of where we'd like to send ahead. Because we're gonna, so this is first meeting in June. Um, we should, we should be okay to, to maybe discuss it. At our, think about it, discuss it and give a direction on our second meeting in June.
Yeah. Is that, is that sufficient?
I think that would work maybe.
Well, I think, I think between Brian and I that we should maybe, you know, come up with, like, comparison.
Yeah.
Do some.
I think that'd be good.
Take our current spreadsheet that we use with everybody's, you know.
Oh, what you done in the past?
Yeah.
Yes, I, yeah, we definitely have to do that, no matter what, we have to do that.
And see. See where, like, how much of a difference it is.
And do we, have we set forth a, um, schedule for budget meetings?
Nope, that's usually in July.
Yeah.
Yep. And it, and it doesn't, it doesn't take people, you know, a month to do that budget.
No.
No.
And it doesn't.
Kevin might need to. Okay, sorry guys.
But it also, um, you know, maybe some additional meetings for the commission, um, in July, early August. And, or later, earlier kind of thing, um. Cause we generally bring every department in, they present their budget and, and we go through it. In fact, including all the political subdivisions that we give mills to or, um, all come in and we can scrutinize their budget. They're, listen to their budget proposals for their department, their political entity. Um, and what we've done in the past is either, um, say our five thirty meeting, we start at that four and just run late. Kinda thing, we need an hour and a half before, um, starting our regular stuff and doing, getting people coming in with their budgets.
Three, ten minutes?
Yep, every ten minutes, somebody's coming through, so just keep that in mind.
Can I ask Brian a clarifying question?
Yep.
So on the, on the page one of the big spread, to bring the county to the minimum, according to this survey, would be twenty thousand dollars approximately. Is that right?
Right, yeah, the option one E, which, gee, I suppose you're looking at.
That would bring everybody to fifty percentile.
Oh, you're looking at, uh.
Yes.
I read it the same way you are.
And then to make us quote unquote competitive under option A, there'd be a total investment of approximately thirty seven thousand dollars. Is that right?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correct. And then option B is the more aggressive.
More aggressive, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't know what they, they mean by benefit costs, because that's something totally separate.
Well, it's, I put that in there. Oh, that's just like your antebers is gonna increase, so I could specifically say that.
But that's, that comes out of a whole different pot of money.
Yeah, it's still a cost of the economy.
Right, right.
I just wanted to.
And you need to know that, cause it's, you're still on the, on the end, it's still what it's gonna cost.
Totally.
Yeah. And if you're a million dollars this year, and all of a sudden you have a million five, well, that's when you go back and you figure out where it's gonna be a half million came from. Or how we got that extra half million.
Okay. So I think we're good, we'll do, make a decision on June, what is this, our next meeting? Twenty? Twenty first?
Twenty?
Twenty.
I don't know, maybe through the explanation or help me better understand. Salaries are still a very difficult thing.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Next year it's difficult.
Well, and there was eighty percent of, uh, eighty percent of the budget for.
Yeah, you, if you call to, to a call, to talk to someone who's not Megan anymore, some guy to.
She had her assistant, who's still out there next to that.
Somebody else to go over.
Yep. So.
Yeah, there's a bit of terminology that's in there that it's even, it's not over my head.
We still have that, um, slideshow that she presented, correct?
Yeah, I think it was.
So review that and if you, when, was that presented, uh, November, last meeting of November?
November third.
November third? So go back to, and watch that, maybe you can hear how they explain it, um, at the Gallagher company.
I found another documentary that they're giving, I'll hold it all you, I mentioned, I think it kinda was a summary, um, of the survey itself. I don't know why I forgot to add it, but, um, so, I don't know how to say. It kinda, it kinda breaks things down, I think, too.
Now, it's a big deal, we wanna make sure that we treat our employees fairly. They're by far the most important asset within the, the county, so, um. It's way harder to find a new one than keep an old one. So we appreciate the retention. Well, nobody's old, it's, yeah. I could feel the, the dirty bugs.
Seasoned.
So, um, but, you know, wages are getting, um. It's, it's a different world out there, so we can't continue to stay in the same box, so. Um, we'll have Brian and Candy work together and bring us some different options come our June twentieth meeting. And so we can make a decision and give our departments a better direction on how they work out their budgets, so. Sounds like a deal?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Water guy still over there?
I think so.
Wanna see if Brian has him in it? Did we wanna, uh, do executive session again or, whatever, cause it's up here.
I mean, technically it would be considered old business, but you could move it to the end. I, Chris doesn't seem to mind it shaking his head, I think I'm fine with it. People's time is precious.
Hey, Brian.
Welcome.
Morning.
Or has there been any, uh, issues that come up that you guys are very involved, that you should know about there?
Besides a problem or wrong with the lake?
They get really standardized.
No, for the water board, it's still been fairly quiet and we've got a pretty big agenda today to deal with, but, uh, we're just dealing with small issues that have come up with our edware project yet. So we've had some discussions about, uh, both ends of that, uh, get, uh, people unhappy no matter which way you go with water. So we're working with it as best as we can, uh. Uh, see, we've also worked with some culverts with Kevin, I guess we're trying to figure out the best way to handle them, you know, guys want bigger culverts, uh. Going through pavement is, uh, a big undertaking, so we're trying to work with that as best as we can to get what needs to be done appropriately. And otherwise not, uh, not a whole lot to talk about this time.
Jay? Anybody have any questions for Brian and the water board? Appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, um, old business, did we need to do something with Sean and the training center? Did we table that from last meeting or? What did we, what did we do with that, did we, did we table it?
You're just, you're just gonna look into it.
Look into funding that? And, and I don't know if we came up with any funding, um, something that we're gonna add to our budget for twenty twenty four. Would you have enough, through what the city's contributing to work with renovations for this year? And then get what, uh, the remainder from the county come first part of twenty twenty four?
I believe we're good, yeah.
Would that, if that would work, I think that would be the best, maybe the best option for us, then we can, during our budget discussion, we can include that into our budget and, and.
I can even see where things sit, like the month of December. Just, just, I mean, we have a lot left of the year and I don't wanna, I mean, it was something that wasn't budgeted for, so I don't wanna have somewhere else fall short and.
Yep, right. So, not that we don't support it, we just.
We're, we're working locally, so we're getting some good support from like different things, so we can, we can make a lot of work.
Okay. Perfect.
You're not closing tomorrow, I know.
Um, well, good. Um, appreciate you coming in. So, uh, new business, we could probably run through these pretty quickly. Uh, approve site authorization, we have two of them. Anybody have any objections to either one of them?
I'm gonna approve both of them.
Sure.
We have motion and a second to approve the site authorizations. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify with a say aye.
Aye, aye.
Pull the same side, motion carries. Uh, update on opioid and litigation.
Yes, um, we've been getting lots of emails from the gentleman named Zachary Blam. He's a paralegal with, uh, the big law firm that we retain, um. There's two updates here, there's a, um, dispersment payment coming from one, which is two thousand nine hundred and fifty seven forty eight. Uh, you have the right to dispute that amount, the deadline to dispute that amount is Thursday. I don't recommend disputing it, but I'm bringing it out here to you all, you guys are the policymakers. So, is that, additionally, there's a, another lawsuit that it appears to be getting going against another subsidiary. Uh, we were asked if we'd like to join that, I would recommend joining that, again.
So you recommend taking over gift and.
Try to get more, correct?
But between like four.
So you need two separate, both, or two separate, uh?
The way, the way I understand it is two separates, yep. Uh, one would be to respond and say, yep, this dispersment is right, we're gonna take what you've said it is. The other would be to, um, to enter into the litigation for the other. There, there's so many companies and distributors and manufacturers out there that they keep trying to round them up, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the first, what is it, opioid.
The settlement demand, the settlement, did that be right?
Yep, um, and it's a yearly payout, and I have a, I have a spreadsheet here too that they sent me that I can show you guys if you really wanna see it.
You just. What's a yearly payout?
Uh, two thousand nine hundred and fifty seven, for how long?
Ten years?
I can't remember on this one, but it goes up a little bit each year. And then it's supposed to be used for remediation or treatment or something like that. And we don't have any great plans for the money yet, so we've been letting it sit in the account and gather interest, so.
My motion is to accept the litigation of the authority. I will second that.
We have motion and second to go ahead and accept the settlement offer. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next thing, I might make a motion to the other litigation.
Yep, and I'm just going to give you some specifics here. So this specific litigation would be against, it's called McKenzie and Company Incorporated. They had an ongoing relationship with Purdue Pharma during and after when Oxycontin was released to the market around 2007. Our retained attorneys who are handling the big class action lawsuit, Nolachi Fears Group, they've recommended them to join in that settlement. If that's approved by you all, I'll fill out the paperwork and get us added today.
I'll second.
I don't know. Okay, all right, perfect. Moved and seconded to go ahead and approve the litigation against. Was it McKinney?
McKenzie and Company Inc.
McKenzie and Company Inc. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen, I will take care of that.
Thank you. Letter of transfer. So we're transferring some funds. About $800,000 to the LEC fund, a little more.
That's just a normal thing.
I don't even try and do it twice a year.
I shall move, aye.
Okay. Motion and second to authorize the letter of transfer to the LEC. Want to roll call on this or standard vote?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve the homestead vote and let's go to County Commission Association Standing Committee requests. So I think we all received this email from the County Commission Association looking for representatives for County Commission Association Standing Committees. Those are the audit committee and nominations.
And resolution.
And resolutions.
Can you have time to look it over?
Yeah, they need to by what, July?
July 19th.
This is for the convention come October.
It was the same thing I went through last year. I believe so. And I gave all the information.
Yep. So.
Yeah, because you, weren't you on the legislative?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's every two years.
So if you have no intentions of going to the convention in October, let us know on the draw your name from consideration, but otherwise if you'd be interested in sitting on one of those committees.
What's the date for the convention?
First weekend or in October. First Sunday through Tuesday.
Yeah, we just, I believe we have to our.
You need to know just so that you can be the rooms and stuff for us, right? And you did that.
October 8th through the 10th.
So we're going to miss our, we don't have to adjust our October.
No, I already changed that.
Yeah, we did that last year.
Oh, isn't it on the 3rd?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we don't have to change.
Yeah, they usually have it the first, where you're kind of. I think they got feedback on, I was having at the, you know.
The first week.
Because it was like the first of the month and.
We had talked about it in one of our meetings there. It just ended up being in their budget time.
So, okay, take that into consideration, home credit, homestead credit. Um, approve it. Need a motion to approve the homestead credit.
It's just that one, right?
Yes.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve the homestead credit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Want to do portfolios and visitors first before we go into executive session? Sean, you have anything for visitors?
Yeah, just real quick, I have this update on all the animals affecting Ramsey County Edmore, I finished their CMS 46 page thing, it won't be fine. They're not going to, they're finishing the paperwork, so they won't be suspended anymore. So hopefully we got them back on their feet. Went into a town or county in Canada, they're about ready to close. We got a short term fix for hiring process, they're going to start doing their own, also went in with public health. And they, and vet services, so that we can get them new adult service, they kind of crap into the fire hall, fire hall will have an approval for the fire trucks. So actually does some good work in Canada, it does affect some parts of Ramsey County, but now Canada's not going to close. They were about to close just a couple of weeks ago. So everything's started to get back on track a little bit. That's all I have, once you have questions.
Thanks, Sean. Any other visitors? Now let's go through portfolios. Start with Commissioner Volk.
I got a meeting tomorrow with Ford. And then with Lake Access, that's what I'm doing, anything open. Fish clean stations are all, all the fears are in. LEC, I'll let you cover that gap. Other than that, I have nothing else, nothing that's pressing.
Commissioner Horace?
Eric Center, Galloway was a huge success, really good one, it was a good, good event. Social Service Home and Lake, always a shortage of people to help or to work. They're way over, they're way understaffed by the clients, otherwise I have nothing else.
Okay. Commissioner Horace?
I met with the Human Service Center in Missouri, Ford I believe is what it's called. Yeah, just staffing issues and the, I was very surprised at the number of people that they serve on a monthly basis. There's nothing really specific, it was just kind of informational.
Got the board tonight. Labor Board tomorrow. County Commission is, we've got Candy working on some stuff for it, so next time we meet, hopefully accomplish something. I don't know if that's, it really hasn't been. First thing we hear.
Yeah.
Lake Region Public Health. Ashley resigned. She'll be done first of August, I remember, right, the job is open. They hired a tobacco person. I mean, other than that, everything's going good, it's just, it's tough to lose Ashley, I think she's doing a great job for public health, so. We're hoping to get someone on board so that they can work with her a minimum of 45 days, is what I got Ashley about. So they can move on with the same. Way she's been running, they've been working really well. Hopefully they see her. Congratulations on their new move, her husband got a job all the way back in California with the military, so it's. It was a tough decision, she doesn't want to move, but it's just one of those things you gotta, dollars, sometimes it's going to be a tough boss, but hopefully there's someone after to fill it. I've been dealing with her quite a bit.
She came down and talked to me and mentioned it and I told her how appreciative we were of, of her transition into that position and the changes that she's made. It all seems to be for the positive, she's a really a, a good person to have within the building and, you know, appreciate her leadership in that position and really wanted to thank her for everything she's done.
I definitely, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if the other word that's more, big positive attitude with her. I've not heard a bad thing.
She was, she was very good, very good hiring, you hate to see her go, but I understand the, the reasoning behind it, so.
Shorted off time.
Yep, it did, so. I guess a couple of quick updates, Airport Authority, if you've driven by the airport, you can see the transformation of the terminal. Going great guns. Hoping to get that open and operational, you know, next April maybe. April, May timeframe, so we get it closed up for the winter and all the interior stuff done by next spring and. And have a grand new opening for a bigger, better terminal. Doubling our space in our, in the terminal out there and that's all through federal ARCA money and, which is a good deal, but. And then one of the things that was discussed and went wrong and wrong with and we decided to go ahead with was a jetway. So you're not boarding planes, you won't have to go outside or, or into the, into the elements when it's 40° or, or non-rain or whatever else, but. So jetway is going to be a big deal and, and working on essential air service, making sure that we continue to have jet service coming in and out of Devil's Lake is a, is a big key and. Going through federal DOT regulations to try to, and then get some regulations changed on that. And so SkyWest can continue to be our operator, but. Maybe, that was, that was under, that was under SkyWest Charter's proposal. Was to both Denver and to Minneapolis. So we have a, you know, three flights a week to one way and four flights a week to another way and kind of thing and. So hopefully that would come to fruition and that would really.
That would be a huge compliment.
That would give us a big boost on both ways. You know, we saw, it took a while to get people to transition from that Minneapolis route that Great Lakes used to provide and going to a Denver western hub. But people have become really appreciative of that, especially in outer western travels, whether it be Vegas or Phoenix or somewhere out in the west coast, works out really well for them. Minneapolis has always been a, a positive hub to go and, to go other directions. So looking forward to, hopefully that comes to fruition and that can get worked out. Law Enforcement Center. Had always been interesting, interesting things going on. As I think it's COs are fully staffed, we're starting to increase inmates in the back as you can see by our invoice from this month. So next meeting with the LEC I think is the 21st of June. And we continue to get regular support and visits from the State Department of Corrections and giving staff down their corrective measures to keep them on task and. And keep them working towards maintaining occupancy, which is good. LEC, do you know what it is or?
Yep, I was hoping I could give another bit on that. I reached out to Howard Johnson and Jack Younger, Howard represents the LEC, Jack represents the city. We're like this close to doing what we talked about, Howard wanted some time to talk to Starr about it. The goal was to have it addressed by the next meeting, which is the one you just referred to. So I'm hoping, hopeful that it will come up at the next meeting and that we'll get a green light and we can hopefully get all this put to bed this summer. There's another LEC update, just so you're aware, a former inmate initiated a lawsuit against Law Enforcement Center. It's called a 1983 claim. We have reached out to Ender or Naderf and we're going to be representing us because Ramsey County was named as a party. However, I do believe that we're going to be removed in short order, I think they got the wrong, the judge made the wrong call.
Yep.
So really nothing to worry about, I got that and I'm working with, his name's Dan Gosta of Grand Forks. He's excellent in this arena, he does all sorts of stuff for municipalities and political subs, so we're in really good hands. But just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that as well.
And the State's Attorney's Office, they did have an interview for an assistant. State's attorney up there?
Open to hear back by Friday, that's the deadline you gave her.
Okay.
Went very well, hoping that we don't get outbid by another county, that's my goal.
And Candy's office is busy as ever and you're going to be, what was your day or is that too right for?
June 12th, we're going to be closed. So, so we're going to put it on the website, the social media, the, the radio. So all of us are going to, we've scheduled like a. Like a, I mean, a little mini training with Grand Forks County on that software. We have watched and been included on some webinars that, yeah, it's. We're going from a dinosaur to a Cadillac, I think. It was.
I think you're right, I researched you a little bit.
Yeah, it, it was, you know, and, and everything is like, you know.
Just bastard.
Yeah, but it's a, you know, like, it doesn't matter where you're at. Like you can log into it, you can, you know.
Trying to make your.
Everything's on one screen.
Yep, it's going to be a good thing, but there is a learning curve and so some training, so it's your office, Lisa's office.
I don't.
Part of a change.
Um, I don't know if she said, um, HR.
Okay.
Yeah, so everybody in, Steve, myself, Leslie, Lisa, Becky. Brian. And.
Yeah, so. So, oh, it's good that we get that out, out in front of the public and so they know, so.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Water World, if anybody's interested in coming on the Water Devil's Lake Water Tour on the 22nd of June. That's open to county commissioners, elected officials, general public is $30. We'll spend the whole day touring Devil's Lake water infrastructure. The main infrastructure that we'll take a look at this year is, besides the Dike Protecting City, Devil's Lake, we'll take a look at the toner control structure, the east end intake and outfall structures. And some irrigation. fault control structure, the east end intake and outfall structures and, uh, some irrigation along the way. Um, we've got a good lot of irrigation as well, so. Um, twenty-second of June is that one. Uh, the outlet advisory meeting was held, um, last month. Uh, can't even remember the date now. Twentieth was it? No, eighteenth.
How's that date finished?
Yep. So, a good crowd, good discussion, um. The west end outlet is operating at a hundred and seventy-five cubic feet per second. East end, they turned it on last week and sprung a leak. So, and they dug up the leak and, uh, it self-adjusted, stopped leaking. So they got this big hole and, and so they were hoping to get that up and operational yesterday. I'm not sure if they did or not, but, um.
So a question about Randy coming to stay on the seat on that.
The, the Outlet Advisory Committee, yes. It used to be an elected official and it was changed through legislation to a governor-appointed position. So, and Bill Mertens was the previous Ramsey County appointee, re-applied and is designated as a representative for Ramsey County. It's a three-year terms and rotates. I sit on it from the joint board's perspective. And my term is up in June, so, the first of July. So technically, anybody that wanted to fill that position from the Devil's Lake base and could, they just have to apply to the website or the office to do that. But, uh, there was fair representation there, there was a lot of people not there. I think it's a seventeen, uh, member committee, if I'm not mistaken. But, uh, gets to be a lot of people around the table and, um. So, hopefully they take the recommendations of the committee at heart and, uh, operate the pumps to their capacity, to their abilities and try to remove some water, so. I think as long as it's on, still on private property and we have that ability to do so, I think I can, we owe it to our constituents to advocate for that. So. And there's still four feet to go before the pumps up there. And they'll never remove four feet in one year, so.
Oh, it's gonna be removing pretty fast if it doesn't rain.
No. So. But, that's all I have. So. With that. Uh, next item on the agenda is the executive session. This item may be discussed in the executive session. There are several legal authorities for closing this portion of the meeting. Specifically, this portion of the meeting is being closed under North Forto Center Code forty-four oh four nineteen dash two and forty-four oh four twenty-six. The topic or the purpose of this executive session is to discuss confidential records and exempt public records. At this time, we motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session rather than an open meeting. Is there such a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Motion and second. Uh, roll call, please.
Roll call me.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk? Do we need Brian here?
Sorry. Sorry, pardon.
Okay.
We can have him, but you don't have to. Told me to ask him. That's up to you guys.
Okay. Aye. Motion carries. The executive session will be recorded and all members of the governing body are reminded to limit their discussions during the executive session to announce, to the announced topic. Any collective discussion, collective comment, or other final action by the governing body must occur after reconvening in an open meeting unless final action is specifically required by law to be taken under executive session. We will now ask the members of the public court attending the meeting to leave the room. Mr. Jaeger, uh, County Emergency Manager, may remain in the room to discuss the confidential and exempt records with the commission as a whole. We anticipate adjourned in the executive session and reconvene in the open portion of the meeting at approximately thirty minutes? And we also note that Sheriff Lang has been invited to attend the executive session to discuss the confidential and exempt records. Meaning minutes will show the executive session began at ten nineteen AM. And was attended by the five county commissioners, County Auditor Candy Christopherson, State's Attorney Paul Cummings, Emergency Manager Chris Jaeger, and Sheriff Brian Lang.
Hold on, because I'm gonna make sure he's.
I have to do some things too.